All right, Plenary Commission meeting. The order please stand for the Clutch Allegiance. Clutch Allegiance.
The United States of America and Institute of Commerce for Western States. One nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Keith Bell, here. Edward Kelly.
Captain Nuske.
Mike Simon, here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bain.
Here.
Mark Porshardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel. Robert Muesli.
Here.
And Kathy Schleicher.
Here.
Chair.
Thank you. Item number four is amendments to agenda.
Yeah, Chair. At the request of our planner, we'd like to remove the under number seven unfinished business, the cap hosting, to a future.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Item number five is approval of minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes of our last April 10 Plenary Commission meeting.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are through. Item number six is new business. Under new business, we have two items. The first item is the site review for 3820 Fruit Road. If the applicant is present and would like, you'd like to come to the podium, state your name, and I believe you should be receipt of the review from our planners.
Donald Johnson. Yes, that's correct. I do have the review from the planners. So my purpose today really was to try to be clear in what application I need to file. Originally, when I said with Sid Brown, he was making, wanted me to be clear on what my plans were for the property and try to include everything as possible that you would ever dream of, that you want on the site. Well, it kind of was a setback for me. I was like, okay, I had to do a little more thinking. I purchased the property last June, I believe, and with real, of no plan other than use it for storage and for bulk, pretty much reuse, pretty much what it's been used for. Unfortunately, it's turned into a little bit more planning, future buildings that might not happen in the next year, which I'm seeing in the view that shouldn't need on the plan. So I'm just trying to be here today to get an idea, so the Plenary Commission knows what my purpose is, so we can move forward, I guess, if that makes sense.
Well, did you review the site plan review that came from Bill Swepster and your comments to the planning commission?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Do you have any feedback in regards to the items they pointed out?
Yes, I do have a few things, but I think, again, as you're looking at the site plan that was presented, really is not what I'm looking to do for the current plan. I'm not going to be putting a building there. There's not going to be employees or parking or retail sales out of the site. We have an office on Point Tremble where we handle our business, and the site will be used mainly just for bulk storage and cold storage of our equipment and materials that we use for our landscaping business.
Will you be having any accessory buildings at all?
No, currently, there is just storage. The plan is to have maybe a temporary office as we begin to build, possibly a building in the back for our equipment and our garage. That was the idea. But again, unfortunately, the advice that was given probably made this more than really what it was. I was just looking for a reuse, be able to store equipment and bulk material there. And then in the future, I would definitely like to build a building, but it's not going to be within the one-year clause that's, that I found out from the review. So I probably, you know, we want to take that part off as far as the building. This is not going to happen in next year.
I'm also receipt of a letter dated April 18th from Sid Brown.
Uh huh.
I'm sure you have it too. Plenary Commission members should have it. It's basically, the Plenary Commission probably requests the following item be included in any motion for approval of 3820 Fruit Road. Due to the type of facilities the applicant must provide or include, a sanitary facility and bathroom on the property, quarter johns are not acceptable. I just want to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I just received that actually today. It was verbally notified of that recommendation that was going to be in front of the commission, but then again, I think that was, his recommendation was based on the fact that we're going to have buildings and employees and office space there, which is not going to occur. By the time employees will be there, whether picking up equipment, picking up material, things of that nature. So I don't know if I would still need that for the purpose.
So am I right in believing that you're going to be using existing conditions as it is today?
Correct.
In this site plan?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, you got over-exaggerate. I mean, the idea is that one day that, what you're looking at as far as a site plan will be an idea of what I'm looking to do, but as of right now, I'm just looking to use the property as it already existed. So, there was a note on here about being 50 feet away from the right-of-way from the road to where my existing parking is, and I just measured it and I was a little, I don't understand, because I'm about 78 feet from the road. I'm more than 50 feet from the ditch for the telephone pole, which I'm assuming is the right-of-way where we would measure. So I know that was a note on there. Again, that was all existing. So I don't know if they're just looking for your opinion on that. That was item number eight. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yes. I have a question on eight as well.
Does the planner, Plenary Commission have any more questions, or is it going to ask maybe Eric, who wrote this review, to maybe respond to what you have just said to us? Plenary Commission members, any questions? Any questions for the applicant? Or would they ask?
Basically, if you're not going to have the site plan that's written, would they be in compliance with using existing conditions as far as plan?
So, we reviewed this as a new site plan for two reasons. One was because of the proposed buildings. That's one of the criteria that kicks you into a site plan. And also because it's an entirely outdoor use. That's another criteria that can kick you into a site plan. However, if you feel that this is an extension of the previous industrial use, you can just consider it that way.
Can you hear anything back there?
No.
No.
I'm not very good.
So, an option you have with this use is that you could consider it as an extension of the previous industrial use, and then have the applicant withdraw the site plan and just address the new use that way. We reviewed it as a new site plan review because of the two proposed buildings, and also because the use is entirely outdoors. Those are two criteria that kicks you into the site plan review requirements, but if you're comfortable reviewing it as an extension of the previous industrial use, that can be done outside of the site plan review.
Are the materials going to be consistent with what's there now?
Well, the materials that were there were stone and topsoil and sand, and yes, they would be consistent. I'll have a little different style stone and stuff that was currently there, but when I bought the property, there were pea gravel and topsoil piles that already existed and some river rock. So, we're going to have a little more decorative stone there and topsoil and sand, but very similar, yes.
I understand. I hear you're going to have mulch as well?
Yeah, we do do mulching. I noticed that there was some qualifications on the mulch, and I did have a question regarding that as well. There's a, it requires a surfaced row, but I don't know if that means gravel as well that's currently there, or if it has to be concrete or asphalt for that.
Our planners have an answer for that one now?
The review says, lastly, mulch storage areas have not been indicated, which require surface roadway access.
Right. It's not specific to mulch. It's specific to combustible materials, which mulch typically can be if it's in large piles. And the requirement is for surface roadway access. So, you could accept certain surfacing material, but it would be ideal to have that on a plan to show where the mulch will be stored and what the access would need to be. And that could be potentially something that's reviewed by the building department. They typically are more so involved with the fire and public safety levels of reviews.
Any further questions for the planning?
Composite piles? Going to have any composite piles at all?
We will be dumping composite on the site, but it'll be haul off-site, so it'll be temporary. So our trucks will pull in and dump the grass that we acquire from the lawn cutting, and then we'll be hauling it off-site to a dump that we pay for currently, because due to the smell of grass, I'm not even interested in having it on my property.
I'm going to ask this to the planners. Is this something, at this point, since what you reviewed seems to be totally different now that we're talking to the applicant in person, what maybe he's looking to do? Yes, maybe we need to do a little bit different approach?
You've had circumstances somewhat similar to this with other uses where people have asked to come in and basically continue a use that may not be 100% conforming with all site conditions. So the question here is, if you feel that what is proposed is substantially similar to what has historically been on this property, and you're comfortable with it continuing until the time this applicant wants to make additional improvements, you could, you could do that without actually approving a site plan. Essentially, you would have them contact the building department regarding any other improvements that would be necessary to satisfy any other codes, non-zoning related codes, and then they would just proceed with operation that way. So that's one option you have. If you feel like this should go through a site plan approval process, they would have to amend the plan that they've submitted and would come back for you, and you would review it. So it's really, these are, you know, not every case that comes before you perfectly fits within a box of exactly, particularly when we're talking about previous uses that are, where there's a request to extend that use. So I think you certainly have the ability to accept the continuation of the use that was already there, assuming it's substantially within the same level of impact and isn't going to be increasing impact on waivers and is similar to what had been there in the past. So I think you have the ability to accept that if you'd like, just like you've done in other cases. But if you feel like this is something that's different, or something that you feel you want to see compliance with certain ordinance items that may not be addressed, then you could ask them to resubmit the site plan and postpone action until a revised site plan is presented to you.
Thank you. I'll go back to Plenary Commission members. Any thoughts?
Well, I would have to agree that it seems as just a continuation of the existing usage at this point.
Any other comments?
But you're going from construction materials to landscaping materials. It can be manure, it can be anything you can drum dunk over there, but...
Is the concrete block storage area new or existing? That's proposed.
It's actually existing. I was just looking to expand it. There were already concrete block there. We had about five bins that were, existed. We're just reconstructing them as our plan, because they're sitting really low, and we just have a different use, well, not a different use, but different sized bins for the material that we're looking to store. So smaller bins, so we can have multiple different products on the property. There will be no manure, that's for sure.
I'm comfortable with it. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Mark, you have any comments?
No, I'm good with it. Postponed it. I'll have to come back. We'll make changes, you don't have to be here.
Well, what's, what would you, what would be your motion? How's that?
I don't agree. Just let them continue using it as existing, and we feel free to make the site improvement. Another plan, come back to the planning committee and start the process over.
Do I understand the...
What I might suggest, through the chair, what I might suggest is a motion that you accept the explanation given by the applicant tonight as being consistent with previous activity on the site, and just have it on the record that you, that they would have to come back in if any additional site improvements are made at a later date for site plan approval.
Got it.
Support.
But no, you can't do that.
But you did indicate, did you not, that you had to increase the height of the storage bins that were too low or something?
No, as far as where they're sitting in elevation of the property, not the height of the actual bins. They're only two block high bins, and the material only probably be a couple feet above that, which I think falls within the site plan, six feet, I believe I read in the review.
Are you moving those storage, that concrete storage block closer to the road, or...
Actually, further away, and with the advice of the review here, it appears that we got to be 150 feet. They weren't 150 feet, so we are moving in the other direction, right?
And that, that's kind of what I was asking about.
Right.
You know, trying to get along the work. Because that'd be, be the only biggest concern I'd see with continuing it, is with the black area.
Yeah, the last bin that was there was about 100 feet, so we got to move a couple bins 50 feet the other way. But other than that, I feel that we're complying with the site plan that we may or may not need. So appreciate your time.
Can I just bring one more thing? Because I read Sid's letter at the beginning. He's still, even with this, he's concerned about the sanitary facilities, bathroom on the property, quarter johns are not acceptable. Any comments from our planner on that one?
Well, obviously, you'll have to readdress that, but typically, if there aren't permanent employees, that this is just a storage place where a truck comes, either dumps or else reloads and then moves on. It may not be required, but you'll have to take that up with the building department. That can be done separately.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the explanation from the applicant, that the site will remain consistent with the current use for 3820 Fruit Street, formerly CJ Trucking and Escavating. Support.
Could I add at least one thing to that, then? Based on the applicant's request to pull the site plan?
Based on the applicant's request to pull the site plan?
Thank you.
Support.
Do you need a moment? Yes, you do. Just a moment.
What was the company saying?
CJ Trucking.
TJ?
CJ.
All right, I have a request. Why do you reread the motion, please?
Accept the applicant's explanation to continue use at 3820 Fruit as CJ Trucking with the site plan pulled by applicant.
Everybody?
You did, did I miss the part that it say?
With the S, CJ Trucking with the site plan, continue use of 38...
Okay, I'm good.
All right, everybody understand?
Keith Bell.
Yes.
Edward Kelly, excuse. Why do Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bain.
Yes.
Mark Porshardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesli.
Yes.
Kathy Schleicher.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Contact the building department, we'll get you on the right track, okay, please?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 6B, which is a public hearing for special land use. And I'm going to open the public meeting at 7:25. And before we start the public hearing, Christine is going to read, on the back of our agenda is the rules for public hearings, and she's going to read them for us.
Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, such as a subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sheet in the, sign the sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Number four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Number five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And number six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you. I also wanted to let everybody know that Keith is going to be our timekeeper for the three and six minutes, so he'll give you some sort of indication when you get to that mark. But we're going to start off first with Matt, who's one of our planners, to make a presentation.
Good evening. So, tonight we have the for the public hearing for 7317 Dyke Road. There, it says special approval land use. The project is located, as I said, on Dyke Road. It's on the west side of Dyke Road, south side there, on the north side of the township. This is what the project looks like, the island looks like when the water level is low. I know in our review, we note that it varies between four and 10 acres. This is what the island looks like closer to 10 acres. And this image right here is more of the existing conditions from last year. The site is zoned C3 commercial, and it is bordered by residential to both the north, south, and are both the north and south of the site, as well as there are some residential uses to the east, but those are zoned C3, and those are in this area right there. And I will note that this area is currently undeveloped. It's zoned residential, but there are no homes there. This is the access to the island. As you, it is currently a dirt bridge, and they are proposing improvements to this as well. So the project, as was, as was reviewed and is in front of you, is an event destination that would include the following uses. A restaurant, and that includes the pool area as well, with a transient marina. There will be a future bathhouse to service the marina, and then outdoor dining and live entertainment at two event areas. Event area one is proposed at a capacity of 450 people, and event area two is proposed at a capacity of 150 people. And this is based on the site plan we have that's dated 2/4/2019. New plans were submitted earlier this week, so those, we will need to review any new changes going forward, but I just wanted to note that we are still reviewing the plans that you have in front of you, and the review letter you have in front of you. So the site as proposed does meet the dimensional setbacks and all the dimensional requirements of the site, as we've reviewed. All of those are listed. I won't read all of those off, but we did measure them. They all meet the setbacks from the Dyke from right-of-way, as well as from the property This is the site plan, the overall site plan of the, of the project. So as we move to, this is the south half of the project. This will show you where the restaurant and permanent building is proposed, along with the pool area sort of attached to that. This is event area two, so that's the 150-person event area. And then one would be, it's right here, just to the north of the building, and then it stretches a little further up. You'll see the rest of that on the next slide. So most of the development is proposed on the south side of the island, near the entrance. So this is the, a close-up of the restaurant and pool area. The pool is proposed, they were right, right up to the water's edge. It would be built in conjunction, or attached to the restaurant, so it'd be accessed through the restaurant and part of that development there. So this is currently the area, as we go over, this would be proposed for 490 capacity, and then the restaurant would have about 100 people in it. So this total site right here with the restaurant and pool is proposed to have a capacity of 590 people, based on, and that's based on building codes. This is the floor plan for the restaurant. As you can see, there's a bar inside. There's a, an area off to the side there that has some doors that open up to make it sort of an indoor-outdoor feeling patio, but that is regulated as an indoor seating area. So that has changed since the project was originally proposed. And then it would have access, as I said, to the outdoor area. This would be the bar, and then the pool, and the surrounding pool area. So looking at parking requirements, I know we've talked about this a lot. I'm going to go over where we currently stand with these, though. So, as proposed, the restaurant would have a maximum occupancy of 134 patrons, which would require 67 parking spaces. So the site plan that you have in front of you provides 106 parking spaces on-site. The pool area, we've, I regulated, it's regulated at one parking space per every three occupants, which would, it has a maximum occupancy of 456. That requires 152 parking spaces. So, as you'll note in the chart, that is over the required, or the provided 106. Event area one is also regulated at one parking space for every three people. That is proposed to have, so there's a little, this has changed a little bit, so they're at 450 right now, so that requires 150 parking spaces, not the 155 that's listed there. And then event area two is proposed for 150 person occupancy, which would require 15 space, or 50 spaces. So altogether, the structures, restaurant, pool area, event area one, and event area two would require 424 parking spaces. The site provides 106, leaves it 318 deficient. If you look at the subtotal, that is the subtotal without the waivers, the applicant has requested two parking waivers. The first one is, requires Plenary Commission approval. They are proposing to provide 25% of their onsite parking via the transient marina, so that boaters can park there as well. So if you were to consider that... So if you were to consider that, that would be a waiver of a hundred and six spaces, and that would bring the deficiency down to two hundred and twelve. The second waiver being requested is to allow half of their parking to be provided off-site through a valet service. So that would require planning commission and township attorney approval for the agreement. So that would require two hundred and twelve spaces to be parked off-site, which would then bring them into compliance if both of these waivers were granted. We talked a little bit about the onsite parking lot design at our last meeting. Again, we still are not in receipt of any new plans, so we can't confirm that these all meet the dimensional requirements. They do appear to meet the intent of the ordinance, they have the right amount of space. You'll just note that there are some spaces that are, do not, we're questioning if they were ten feet wide, but again, all of the spaces combined do meet the required interior parking lot landscaping. We received some communication from the applicant, we discussed this at the last meeting, that they are proposing two parking seasons. The off-season would run from November first through May first. It would require parking for only the restaurant, which is sixty-seven spaces. They have provided a hundred and six, so their off-season parking lot would be compliant. The on-season, from May first to November first, when the event areas would be operating, that was the scenario we just discussed, where they would be three hundred and eighteen deficient without any waivers. And I listed the waivers there at the bottom again. Those were the transient arena, for about twenty-five percent provided by boats, and fifty percent to be provided off-site, only for the lay use. The collective parking proposal is approximately a half a mile away, located at seven-four-seven-nine Dyke Road. This is a street view of the site last year. As you can see, it is currently approved as a boat storage lot. It is not improved as a parking lot, it's currently dirt and gravel and grass. So we have noted in our review that this, per the township ordinance, would be required to be brought into compliance for a parking lot, which would be paving, screening, and interior landscaping. Here's some more, this is another view of the collective parking with the street that it's along. So again, there are residential uses adjacent on three sites. So this is a little bit more about the off-site parking improvements. As I mentioned, it is currently used as a winter boat storage lot. So the idea would be that when the boats aren't being stored there in the on-season, they'd be able to park there. And then when off-season, when the boats are parked there during the winter, they would not need this lot. So they've proposed to resurface it with asphalt millings, two-to-three-inch top base applied and compacted, so it wouldn't be, it would just be a compacted gravel. They've proposed a four-and-a-half-foot-tall by ten-foot-wide wooden fence. The location is not a hundred percent clear, it's not shown on any site plans. So we would ask that that be included, if you were to consider this, on the site plan application for this parking lot. This proposal is a change of use from storage to parking. An application for site plan approval for the new parking lot that is located off-site has not been provided. Only a concept sketch was provided. So if you were to consider this, they would have to submit a site plan and have that reviewed, and it would have to show all of the improvements proposed on the site plan. So this is again, a close-up of the lot, this is the lot right here, it's got some boats on it right now. This was my best estimate as to where the fence was proposed, I'm going to let the applicant confirm that. This is the sketch plan that we were provided. This was labeled as a proof of concept, to show that they could fit that number of cars there. Again, you'll notice this is missing some of the site plan elements that we normally require, dimensions, screening, landscaping. So this is again, just provided as a conceptual for your consideration, and to show that it can be done. Your special approval land use standards are the nine standards listed on the last pages of your review. I'm going to read them off tonight, since I don't believe we've actually read all of them, just so that everyone in the audience and the planning commissioners have all heard all of the criteria that you are looking to, that you were reviewing this project against. Again, this is for the outdoor dining and live entertainment aspects of it, which would take place at the pool area and in both of the event areas. Special land use approval standards. The planning commission shall review the particular circumstances and facts applicable to each proposed special land use. In this case, the request is to have live outdoor entertainment in terms of the following standards and requirements, and shall make a determination as to whether the proposed, the use proposed and subject site meet the following standards and requirements. Number one, will be in accordance with the general objectives, intent, and purposes of this ordinance. Number two, will be in accordance with the goals and objectives of the Clay Township master plan. Number three, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such a use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. Number four, it will not be hazardous or disturbing the existing or future uses in the same general vicinity and in the community as a whole. Number five, will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services, such as highways, streets, police and fire protection, stormwater drainage, refuse disposal, water and sewage facilities, and schools or persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately for such services. This is continued. Number six, will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. Number seven, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. Number eight, will ensure that the environment shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practicable by minimizing tree and soil removal and by topographic modifications which result in maximum harmony with adjacent areas. And number nine, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district. So those are what you are considering while you are reviewing the special land use requested for this project. So our next steps for this evening and for this project, I would just like to make clear for everyone. So the applicant is going to give you a presentation after you've asked me any questions. You will then receive any public comments, if anyone is wishing to speak. At that point, you will discuss the project, you know, kind of let, based on any of the comments you hear, you can ask the planners or the applicants questions. I will note that the applicant has indicated an updated site plan has been generated on four-twenty-two-nineteen, so earlier this week. I did receive this on Tuesday, so it's not a part of this review, but that will be submitted and reviewed before any action can be taken on the project. And the, I know the chair is going to read a letter. The agencies listed in the building department letter must sign off on the updated, on the updated site plan. That letter again, will be read into the record once I am done here. As I noted earlier, a separate site plan application must be considered, must be submitted for the consideration of off-site parking. The planning commission, as part of your discussion, should then discuss whether it needs other information from the applicant. This could include a traffic study, if that's one of your concerns. And if there's no, if the applicant is resubmitting a site plan, I just want to make it clear that the next meeting date regularly scheduled, planning commission, is for May twenty-second, which would mean that we would need our plan submitted by May third, which is one week from Friday. So that's the timeline, so if, I just want to make the planning commission, the applicant, clear that it is a tight deadline if there's changes. So those are the dates that we would be targeting. If we do not receive the site plan, an updated site plan by May third, then it will be considered for future meetings. And then I have the site plan up here. I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to the applicants.
I suppose I could read the letter that I, how about I read the letter, the other correspondence that everybody should have in their packet? But the first one is dated April second from Sid Brown, who is our building official. Dear chairperson, the Clay Township Building Department wants the following items to be included in any motion of approval for seven-three-seventeen Dyke Road, and list the property number, before any construction begins. Building department approval of all construction documents. Michigan Department of Transportation, approval in writing. Police Department and Fire Department approval of traffic plan. Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, approval of the extension of water line. Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, approval of the sewer. Department of Army Corps of Engineers, approval in writing. Total engineering approval by the building department. Also, please clarify that the planning commission approval is for the project, not permission to start the project. Thank you for your cooperation with these standards, Sid Brown. We also received an updated review dated April fifteenth from the fire department. And... Basically, if you would know, it says to be reviewed by the plant, by the building planner? Or is there adequate functional access for the building, okay? We also have the fire department. Is this treaty adequate to carry the volume of traffic and terrain movements needed? Leave this would be thus left to M.D.O.T. Also, is there a necessary right-of-way available? Again, should be looked at by M.D.O.T., which was accompanied by a letter dated April seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen from our fire chief, George Rose. He's also requesting the following additions. One, need to extend six-inch water main and add a hydrant at the north end of the parking lot. Two, fire detection system needs to be installed in the building. If you have any questions, please contact me.
Thank you.
I'll start back over to Matt.
Again, I am happy to answer any questions that you have right now, based on the information I just presented.
I guess this may be a little premature, but I know a six-inch water main at the end of the, little bit of the parking lot, is that going to supply the restaurant and the other facilities?
I think the applicant will, yes. I think that's probably what, that's the answer right there.
One thing that I kind of see, and the pool area is going to be accessible from the restaurant?
Correct.
If there's no changing facility, I don't see any changing facilities on the exterior of the building. And I'm not a health official, but I don't know if the health official is going to be allowing patrons in swimsuits to be, in no shoes, and walking in towels going through the restaurant? So I was wondering if there's going to have to be some sort of floor plan change that's going to affect the building?
I think they have an exterior, but the applicant can answer, but I think they have an exterior access to bathroom.
Yes, I think it's right here, if we look, this is the bathroom facilities. So it appears it can be accessed, I'm not sure if there's a sidewalk, but there is an exterior exit that will get you to the bathrooms without the restaurant. The connectivity of that, I cannot confirm, but based on the floor plan that we have received, you wouldn't have to necessarily walk through the restaurant.
Matt, my question is regarding the off-site parking.
Correct.
Would it be correct in assuming that before we could even think about approving that as a use, that it has to be an actual parking lot?
Yes.
So they would have to have it paved, marked, strung?
Based on the way your ordinance is written, they would either have to bring that lot up to the parking lot standards, which would then require the five percent interior landscaping, screening on the outside, full paving, the spaces, you know, properly dimensioned. Anything outside of that would require a variance.
Which would have to go through the ZVA.
Correct.
So as it stands right now, we cannot authorize the use of that parking, because technically it doesn't exist.
You can conceptually consider it? Just to know that if you're saying, yes, we're okay with the idea that you have an off-site valet, just that, you know, that alone, you know, there's, nobody's going to be walking to and from the sites. At that point, if you agree, then I believe the applicant would be, they would, no, I don't believe. They would have to submit a site plan that meets all the site plan standards, and then you would consider that site plan. At that point, they would either request a variance or bring it up to township code. Thank you.
You could also make it smaller, like, don't run all the events?
Yes, yes, there are several scenarios that...
Come back later with a more detailed engineering plan?
Yes. So then, I believe, yeah, there are several options to consider here, but it doesn't all, this is, that parking scenario is every, every proposed area running at full capacity.
And when we consider the parking requirements, two hundred and twelve spots are supposed to be, is it two hundred and twelve?
Two hundred and twelve, with Barrett requested to be provided off-site.
That is due to the, basically, the provision to reduce the parking is due to the fact that we have the entire marina full of boats and full of people that attend there, so we don't need that parking. Is that an assumption that I'm supposed to make?
Can you say that again?
We have parking requirements?
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we want to get a waiver for a hundred and six from the docking facilities. Are we therefore to assume that four hundred and twenty-four people possibly show up in boats rather than coming by car?
They are proposing, the site provides a hundred and fifty boat slips. So that is what they are, what the site could handle. Essentially, this proposal is assuming that one hundred, or three hundred and eighteen people arrive by vehicle, and the other hundred and six would arrive by boat. That's the vehicles, that's not the people, that's just the boats.
Right.
Yes.
I failed to see the boats necessary, and not require parking, because the rest of the people still can come by car. And so we need all the parking that is requested, and some water, play floor, whatever the number is. So I have to finish that.
Sorry, I'm having trouble here right now.
No, the, there's some background.
The audience, you can be quieter, just because it's really hard in this room. We apologize for the acoustics, but this is the best we can do. Hopefully in the future, we'll be better at it. So the audience, can this be quiet, or get your chance, okay? Thank you.
We have a full capacity when all events are filled.
Yes.
And that capacity requires four hundred and twenty-four parking spots.
Yes, that is correct.
And we want a waiver for a hundred and six parking spots because people arrive by boats.
Yes.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the other people don't show all up, does it?
That does, that's correct.
I think additionally, though, I saw in the business plan and on some of the parking requirements, that we had parking slots for employees, five and two, and then somewhere in the body of the second proposal or the business plan, I saw that the employees could go up to twenty-five, that would... go up to 25, and probably a few more people too, would it not?
It would.
Thank you.
Hearing no more questions for me at this time. So if you'll give me one moment, I'm going to put the applicant's presentation up.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Why don't you identify yourself, so the audience knows who you're talking about?
I'm Joe Henninger.
And Brian Rose.
Thank you.
We put together a PowerPoint presentation to go over some of the things that we're looking at. I know some of the numbers might seem a little shocking at first, but, you know, basically there are things that we've worked within the ordinances and working with you guys for the last three months, as you know, to go over, you know, why we've done things the way that we've done, including the off-site collective parking, which, you know, we're looking at a valet service versus a public parking lot. And I know, Keith, you had some questions about that, where the actual customers aren't going to be driving to the lot, it's going to be a valet service. And those would occur when there is a wedding, that type of an event. Well, when they handle that, I did want to go over that, and I know I'm supposed to reference towards the board. We know there's a lot of rumors going around, a lot of things that people are talking about, a lot of, I guess, facts that aren't correct. You know, there's quite a few that I heard, so, are you ready to roll this?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, some of the rumors, you know, basically are that there were, I heard a couple people tell me, you know, there's five multimillionaires going in on this. You know, it's basically me, you know, and Brian, but, you know, it's my, it's my funds, I'm putting it together. Brian's been real instrumental, he's been a good friend of mine, I'm also partners with him in another business. We work well together, we're trying to put together a concept here. You know, I've been coming up this way since 1961, staying, my grandpa bought a boat from Pete Bowregard Sr., and kept it up at Bell Harbor. So I've been coming up here for a long time and love the area. You know, we put together a plan here, basically, that we wanted to be an asset to the community. You know, we want to put together something. When I saw the property, you know, just fell in love with it, and, you know, we wanted to put, you know, a nice restaurant bar facility out there, you know, a marina-type location, which falls within the charter in terms of their, their overall plan, calls for a transient-type marina. And, you know, we want to have a pool there, you know, something, you know, something that people can come and enjoy. In addition to that, we know it's seasonal, you know, we've talked to many different people, including, you know, Bill Rose and Jerry and some other guys, that a lot of restaurants around here have gone out of business. You know, we don't want to be in that position, so, you know, we need to do some type of events, outdoor events. You know, we want to do outdoor weddings, you know, the view is so beautiful, the sun sets, we feel that that's something that, you know, young millennials and alike will want to come and, you know, get married here. You know, in terms of, we want to do a Fourth of July party, you know, who doesn't like the Fourth of July? You know, those are the kinds of things that we want to do here that will help ensure that we can maintain the full season, when there will be those dips, you know, in the off-season. You know, you look at some of these numbers and, you know, it's like, wow, what are you guys thinking? But, you know, if I were coming in just to do a marina, I would have to have two cars for every boat, that's a requirement to do a marina. You know, and then when, when the ordinances here are set up, they're not set up for an island. You know, we're an island where we feel voters are going to want to come. You know, you're going to come, you're going to, your buddy's going to come up, hey, you know, let's go up here, check out the sunset, grab fish and chips and, you know, hang out, watch the game. You know, with the basic laws or ordinances as they are in place right now, you know, I got to come running out, even though I got dock space, and say, you can't come in because the ordinance only allows 25% of my patrons to be voters, essentially. So the reason that we have the off-site parking was because we felt, you know, it's something the ordinance can allow, which will allow us to be able to have a wedding and not kick everybody out of the restaurant. So that's where we go here. But we could run through this development plan. This is, Brian, go ahead.
Matt covered a lot of this, this is basically our team, it's in our, it's in all of our stuff, we've got people we've worked with since the very start, with our engineers, our architects, we were construction engineers for the bridge, we were environmental consultants that was based on wetlands, we worked the DEQ, now has already approved the permit, working with the Army Corps to finalize their permit, requires two, of course, the map location is pretty well-known where that, where that location's at. Again, on the lake, where it exists, on the lake, it's pretty well-known. The development of it, it was an undeveloped piece of property, it's been used for many years, it was in the family for some businesses that were ran there, some storage lots, some rental shanties off the property, but pretty underutilized, probably for the last 20 years, a little more longer. The, when we showed up on the site, there's a lot of blight concerns, there's old equipment on there, there's shanties, we filled probably dumpsters, two 50-yard dumpsters with just trash that we picked up. We hired some local guys in the area that helped us out there, and we've been trying to clean up, just to get the, get the garbage picked up as a starting point. Some of these pitches really didn't show how bad it was, but in the canal area, we see some docks that are obviously a concern, they're broken down, we've got trees in the canal, I think we removed four or five fallen trees that were in the canal, obviously an issue as far as safety and, and just an eyesore. You can see some of the docks that have been kind of left in shambles over the years, and that's kind of where it sits. Today, we did some basic repair on a couple of the docks are out there, so we get accidents by boat, but they really have been not utilized. Matt covered the site plan. As discussed, we're trying to cover everything south, we understand the concern, our plans are a solid building and towards the road, and point towards the lake, keep it out of the south, at the north end, obviously there's residential in that area, we've got the parking lot, so really, less than half of this island is, we're requesting for the plan to submit. We understand, we meet the ordinances of the plan use of C3, obviously the concern is the outdoor, outdoor entertainment, and things that are outdoor entertainment and the, this is considered outdoor patios and entertainment. Dockways, we've been able to DEQ them, we do sea walls and docks and put a nice docking all around that facility. We planned on side tie, you know, boats up instead of, instead of going out into the canals. It would propose 185, 85 pylons alone, just for dockage. We intend to propose open that south channel up, it's not being utilized now, it's a kind of a canal that was once upon, and ideally put some of the, a majority if we can, of the, of the patron of that restaurant up in the boaters, up in that area, which is not being utilized, or hasn't been a long time. And then if we, we'll have the back area as an overflow. There's a little close-up of that area, we've added a turnaround for valet, pickup and drop-off area, obviously added a landscaping to meet that requirement. We feel that this parking lot is going to be sufficient. We do have room to extend that parking lot down. At this point, we want to really see where the business comes from, we think the majority of our business are going to be from the lake, with the addition of parking is really is a benefit for patrons that want to come that don't have boat access or lake access. So it's actually a little bit larger, the parking numbers are a concern, but also we look at numbers that are maxed out. And so to max those numbers out, we really have to intend to have all areas, the pool area, the bar, the restaurant, the venue, one and two at full capacity. We'll see, I mean, you know, that, that, as, those numbers are all obviously done on max capacities. Layout design, we've talked about it a bit, you know, basically layout, our architects here tonight, and we wanted to lay out a real basic concept, kind of use that craft and feel, steel roof, using that, you know, a nice layout for, you know, obviously a peeling area with garage doors, some opening windows to take in that lake view, and obviously hopefully enjoy that sunset that falls, falls overnight. Layout, Matt already covered this, we added additional dining space, we sealed off the back wall, obviously tried to keep noise directional towards the lake. The door walls are opening, with the pool area, we're still working the DEQ on the pool area, there'd probably be some kind of separation when the pool's closed, they want to be able to shut that down, like in the off-season, the cooler would be locked up, so you couldn't access that area if it's closed during the off-season, so. The, that's still, we're still working with them on the design of that. I know Matt did talk about it, the upgrade to the site plan, the plans itself, we did make a small change, we're working with M.DOT now on the change of the design, we've spoke with some neighbors, adjoining neighbors, and how they prefer this, the entrance, and so we've come to an agreement on the way that property should be accessed, and we've updated our drawings, proposed M.DOT. So we have a permit now with M.DOT, and we're waiting for basically their review of that at this meeting with them. You know, intentionally, we want to use that Event Area 1 for tent areas, we talked about weddings, the sunsets are beautiful over there, we really see those events, they're going on, you know, midday weddings that have the sunset as part of a kind of a closing scene for those weddings. Obviously, we understand the noise entrances over there, we would escape those. You know, the pool area would be, we talked about it in our third phase, we want to get the restaurant up, up and running and be successful before we've worked our, worked our way into that pool area. As far as distance-wise, something we looked at, noise, and looked at the distance of locations from that restaurant area, and this kind of shows the distance, you know, roughly about eight to 900, eight to 1,000 feet from Start Drive area. Some of our closest neighbors is probably the C3 residential, we use a residential off of...
That's Hen.
Was that, that's Hen?
Hen's house.
Yeah, the closest guy. And then obviously, there's another residential there, it's about 500 feet. Ideally, we're trying to keep the noise outside of that area and towards that direction if there is any. And that's it. So this is a real quick overview, so we're here to probably answer any questions, yeah.
Well, one of the things I'd really like to add before that, I mean, you know, in terms of the distances from the houses on Start Drive, you know, we are as far as 1,000 feet away from someone on that canal up here, and over here, you can look at the distances from the restaurant is 855 feet. So basically, what you're looking at is an average of about three football fields in terms of distance between where the restaurant is and where their house is. You know, someone stood on the goal line on one end and on the other, you know, do three of those, and now I'm facing the other way, because the music will be directionally pointed away from the residence. You know, we put this here on the spot for a reason, we wanted to, you know, take our neighbors into effect, we're very conscientious, we want to take care of it. Some neighbors have talked to us, or talked to me about, you know, well, what happens if, you know, some knucklehead comes by and he's playing his radio too loud or whatnot? You know, I told them, basically, they're going to have to answer to me, I'm going to be working there, my wife's going to be working there, Brian's going to be there, you know, we're going to be taking care of business, we're not going to allow someone to come in and disrupt what we're doing. You know, we want to make it right, we want to keep it tight, and if someone is causing problems, then they're going to be banned from the island. You know, basically, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, we're going to go to the public hearing, or it is a public hearing, but to the public's comments. So, there is a sign-up sheet in the back that we requested you sign up with your name and address, but anybody can still speak, but at this particular point, I would ask whoever wants to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Sure, go ahead. Keep in mind the rules that we already read to you, okay?
Well, publicly, Phillips Drive, here since 1974, and proud to be a Muskrat. The presentators sound, everything's fine, everyone's going to get along, everything this and that, it sounds like a big party where everyone lovey-dovey. Well, you know darn well it isn't going to be that way. I'm concerned. If they love the area so much, leave it the way it is, it's never going to be the same. I drove down Stark Road, there's at least four houses on that road that are for sale. Those people are paying taxes, they want to live here, they want to retire here, they can die here, and they're, they're being supplanted by money. Also, I'm counting up 450 people here, 160 people here, it's almost 1,000 people can be there at one time. There's 150 people in this room. Can you imagine 1,000 people there with the noise? The people on Phillips Drive and Farnsworth did not receive any notification of this meeting until last week. That's terrible.
Right.
I want to know about the boats. How big a boat are you going to allow? I realize, being on the water, the bigger the boat, the bigger the jerk. I'm worried about, I'm worried about the weight. People are kayaking there, people are swimming there, people have smaller boats. I suggest you take the size to, if this goes through, 24 feet maximum. How about the sewage? 1,000 people, sewage there, can we handle that without extra, without extra facilities and water and police? I think we got to take care of all that. Where are they going to get the dredgings? Are they going to take it from the lake? Are they going to have a dredge out as a channel so those boats can come in? Is that area going to be disturbed? Um, da-da-da-da-da. Okay. We're worried about the noise level, we're talking about bands. It travels a long way on the water, and 800 feet is really nothing to the people that live there. Okay, all right, that's it, I'll give up my time to other people, thank you very much.
All right, excuse me? I'm going to go with this gentleman, hold on one second. Yes, there you go. No, no, no.
Me?
Yeah, you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How's everybody?
Please state your name and address.
My name's James Jacobowski, I live at 7402 Dyke Road, that's right next to the bridge on M29. I'm directly across from Rosemarine. I received this letter three or four weeks, three weeks ago. Three weeks ago. I have 17 cousins that live on the next two canals behind me that received nothing. Nothing. On Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I can't pull out of my drive. I wait 20, 30 minutes sometimes to pull out of my drive, the traffic is so bad. If you look up the accidents that have occurred from Anchor Bay Drive to Star Road...
That's right.
It's terrible. It's very terrible. My problem is, I have a question for all of yous. Would you light jobby nooners in your backyard every day of the week? My dog's... Stop and face, my city people. My yard, I don't buy, I don't buy any mulch, I don't have to. No one in my house smokes. My whole landscape is nothing but cigarette pots. I pick up dirty needles and beer cans on my lawn every day next to that bridge. My kids have never been allowed to go up and get the... My kids have never been allowed to go up and get the mail or pick the garbage out. They learned to ride bikes at Ferry Ave Elementary. I had to put them in a car, they're not allowed in my front yard because of all the traffic and danger. And you want to bring more? You want to have a shuttle go from Plagin's Place to there? Come on, people, let's wake up. Would you want this in your yard? Who would want this in their yard? Thank you for your time.
Next. Pretty cool back and forth. I'll take you, we'll just keep going back and forth, it's too high to keep some.
My name's Tony Katschowski, I live on Lake Tribe, off Dyke Road. I have a couple of questions. I'd like to reiterate what you said about the traffic gets in and out of, off the road. On weekends, we have a saying, stock up for the weekends, because you can't get in and out of a tight road. In far as the access, it's going to be over the bridge that goes to St. John's Marsh. And if you try to pull out there, you're not going to see, it's going to, hard to see cars coming from the north going south because of that bridge. That's a fact. And one other point, are you going to, you going to have liquor?
Sir, sir, you have to address your comments to me, okay? Do you want me to address them to your end?
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, you're going to have traffic going from the restaurant to the public, to the access for parking, right? So tell me, if people have been drinking, they're going to start walking. Okay? At night time, you will not be able to see these people walking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Sinclair Smith, I live at seven three one seven B Lane. And there are some issues that came to my mind about this project is, one being the water levels. I kayak past that island a lot, because I go out that way, that's the way I go to get to the lake, is right past that island. And I noticed, like, before the level, water level came up about six inches just recently, it was about, the ground there on that island was about two feet above the water level. So, you know, whatever is getting built, they better build the stilts, I would say, if you can do that. And also, then, like, remember back in two thousand, two, to two thousand and five, how low the water level dropped? Just keep that in mind when you're dredging those ditches for the boats, because you got to dig extra deep. A lot of people may not be able to fit the next time the cycle brings the water back down. And another issue I was thinking about were mosquitoes. Those mosquitoes, they, around that area, they come out in clouds. And when you swat them, you can feel their body weight. You know, they, they are serious about getting every bit of your blood they can. And so, you know, it's better to think about that kind of stuff, because that'll drive away customers, you know, if you don't get rid of the mosquitoes. And then you, getting rid of the mosquitoes, what does it entail? Spraying poison, you know, so. It's just some issues that I thought about, you know, it's water levels, mosquitoes, and, you know, it is a small island. The numbers that they're talking about is pretty steep for me to, you know, I'm not an engineer, I worked with a few though, but, you know, it's, it's a tall order to make happen what they're talking about.
Thank you.
Excuse me, good evening, my name's Gary Yanarik, I'm an attorney, I'm just retained yesterday by some of the property owners in this particular neighborhood, I had been retained earlier, I would give you a written summary as to their concerns and some of their oppositions to it. But I did receive from your office, because I was here yesterday, their updated plan. And part of their presentation, they made reference that supposedly that they had an MDQ permit, but then another time, they said, well, they're still waiting for some MDQ permits. But in planning a special land use, especially when you're on the water, you have to take into consideration the MDQ permits as to dredging, filling, and the core permits as to the same. And until they have those permits, and quite often the MDQ and the cores, especially in the bigger projects, schedules a public hearing, quite often it's in the community where the property is located, because I've done many developments in Chesterfield, and we had the public hearing at that facility. They don't really say that they have it, in one of their drafts, they have a proposed permit together, but if you look real close, it says draft. It doesn't say that it was issued by the MDQ. So obviously, I'm going to be in contact with the MDQ and the core as to our concerns. The other thing that they mentioned, and the planner mentioned, that they have this off-site parking at the, I think it's called Sunset Bay now, it used to be the Piers. But in your ordinance, and I read that yesterday, and I couldn't give you the specific site, but it's in there, you can have off-site parking in a lot of communities, like Chesterfield and Baltimore, and your ordinance says, but it has to be within three hundred, three hundred feet of the location. Well, their own documents say it's about a quarter of a mile to half a mile away, so it doesn't meet that requirement, so it seems to me that you can't give them a special land use permit, because they don't meet that criteria. And they're way over as to, or way under, depending on how you look at it, as to the number of parking spaces that they want you to waive. And then, in that drawing they have, if you drive by that facility, I drove by there and stopped in on the way here, there's boats parked there now, and there's boats and cars parked there, because it's an active marina, that that marina, and it's changed hands a few times over the years, they've used more and more of that as a parking facility, so they have to have some like exclusive agreement, that you have to approve with conjunction with that site plan, that says there's always going to be designated parking for this operation if you allow it when it's more than three hundred feet away. The other concern, and some of the other people mentioned it, is that the, coming in and out of there, they have a narrow piece of property that I think is between fifty and seventy-five feet wide. A couple of years ago, in Ivory Township, they approved that Dollar General store, and they made that facility build a bypass lane and a taper lane. Well, when you come out of Bill Rosen's place, which is just to the west of this, when you look to the left, you have a hard, short site distance, because there's the bridge abutment, but there's a long guardrail, and you have to have the guardrail in place, that if people run off the road, they don't instantly hit the concrete. And it seems to me that before your group approves anything, that you have to see an approved MDOT permit for their driveway approach. And I represent many developers, and when we have a proposed project, you can go to MDOT, and you can get a preliminary approval on your proposed driveway approach, and if they want to make changes, they mark it in red and say, like in one situation, my guys, the driveway approach was twenty-five feet wide with a fifty-foot taper, they said, we'll approve your site, a thirty-foot wide opening with a seventy-five-foot taper, they marked it on there, and the local community approved it. But they have jurisdiction over the road, not the township. My one contact did take these photographs, and I'll give these to you, because it is of significant nature, and do you mind if I approach you?
That's okay.
The, it's okay to approach?
Yes, it is.
So this shows some, you know, eagles flying in the neighborhood. And then, this is from some of the papers, right off the backyard, showing the blue heron. And here's an eagle in the tree. And this is kind of what it looks like in the summertime, you know, Monty's Bay or Bouvier Bay. So there's a lot of activity that's already there. This shows. This shows like the high water, and in conjunction with this, there's a lot of hazards to navigation in there, because of the fact that there was old seawalls and float docks. This is the narrow approach into the facility. I think one of their engineers said that their bridge would hold thirty to forty thousand. A lot of communities say, if you build a bridge, it has to hold eighty thousand pounds so that the fire truck, which loaded with water, can get across safely, even though this bridge doesn't span very far. Here's the bridge. And one of the issues too, is with reference to your group and the core, if they allow them to dredge, it's going to impact these people's seawall on Stark Drive, because a lot of their shootings are only eight to twelve feet deep. And even if you dredge off, underground water or land will slowly seep away in their...
This can only let you know your time is up, so...
Well, I would, maybe it's better for me to talk than...
No, 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 we gave you six minutes, and that's what the rules we read at the beginning, six minutes per group, and we gave you the, you're over six minutes, which is fine, so that's why they say come to a conclusion here.
Well, my conclusion is this, that at this stage, they didn't address the eight standards, they just put the eight standards in the back of their document, like your planner said, he read them, but they don't have a written response saying how they meet your standards. So I think until they do that, you can't approve it, and for all those other reasons. So I'd suggest that, you know, at the conclusion of tonight's session, that you continue the public hearings, and people can speak in the future, but it be postponed to sometime in June and July, so that if they do submit a revised plan, people have an opportunity to come here and look at the full-size plan, and make your comments, either again in person or by writing.
Am I going to hand you back your pictures? Thank you.
No, you can keep those for the record, you can put those, because I have a copy, you can put those in the file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience who would like to approach and make a comment? And just keep in mind that, at this point, we've, if we're repeating the same thing we've already heard, we get the general idea, so when you come to the podium, just again, state your name and address, we'll go over there. Who would like to? Hold on. How about we do this one, and then we'll go to your next? Oh, he's going the other way? Okay, we'll take you, let's go.
Joe Van Smith, seven seven two three seven Blueville. Few comments I have to make is mainly the fire department going across that bridge with the truck. As far as I could tell, that's a one-lane bridge. How are you going to handle getting fire trucks across there, going in, when you've got panicky people trying to get out? And once the truck is in there, is there going to be enough land there for the truck to maneuver? That's emergency-type stuff. The other thing is, I hear all this talk about keeping the noise down, and you're only a thousand feet away this house, and three hundred feet from this house. Well, I live on Blueville, and I hear the Algenack High School band, and they practice it. That's all I had to say.
At this moment, I'm going to take just a quick break, I forgot to have one letter that we did receive in the package, and we're going to read that into the record, and then we'll continue.
I received the above notice in the mail, as I am within three hundred feet of the property. However, many of you may not be aware of this. I am against the blanket approval of this application for several reasons. In addition to their plan for a restaurant, outdoor pool area and tents is for a hundred-plus float slips and up to twelve hundred people plus staff. They would like to turn it into a Put-in Bay-like destination area. The entrance to the island is from a two-lane major highway across a narrow bridge. There is no room for a turn lane either into or out of the driveway. The road is already extremely busy, and the additional traffic would create a hazard. We already have two hundred to three hundred boats in our bay each weekend, but when the sun goes down, most of the boats leave and the area becomes quiet again. If the island is allowed to have outdoor entertainment, it would deprive us of being able to enjoy the use of our property. There are also rumors of a proposed hotel on the north end of the island, which would interrupt the view of all the homeowners along Stark Drive and Dyke Road. We all know what the reputation of Put-in Bay is. Do we want our area which borders on St. John's Marsh to become that? We live here to enjoy the three thousand-plus acres of marshland and wildlife. Lake St. Clair already has Gull Island with its annual jobbing nooners celebration on the other side of our lake, which brings us enough bad publicity. We don't need another location so near our homes. Signed, Jerry Shiloh. And he gives us his email address.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the public who would like to come forward and make a comment? Go this way.
Okay. All right.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Pat, seven four one one Dyke Road. And my view is that I think everybody has the same vision for the township, that we want to be ecologically sensitive and also economically viable. On my Put-in Bay, I've done a lot of work in Charleboy, and I, when I see the area, I really feel that, that everybody loves it, but there's, there's a good balance there. And I, I'm really happy that there's a whole dialogue, that we can hear everybody's concerns. But when I was looking at the recreation plan, some of the goals were to have a quality of life through social, intellectual, physical, emotional, and interactions and development. And so, one of the things with a community, right, is that tourism, there's reports from two thousand and sixteen on tourism, ecotourism, it does generate an influx, but it's also positive for the economy, it's positive for the homeowners financially. And what I can hear, you know, being here, is that there's a lot of fear of change, right? And when you look at the change curve, first thing is denial, fear, and a lot of the things with the proposal, like, I think that they're talking about, you know, taking out the frag mighties and putting in, you know, the natural species of flowers, so it would be beautiful, you know, around the curve there, but from a problem-solving aspect, you can be able to solve those, right? So there's a lot of things that are brought up, but, you know, together, we can overcome that, right, as a community and as a business. I understand, you know, when you go to Birmingham, you know, there's different communities, and it's like, what does your community want to look like, and what is the vision? And how does that, that look together between, you know, the residents and the business owners? So, you know, in some, I want to, you know, I want to be about, I want to be an asset to the community as well. You know, I, you know, try to clean up, and sometimes it doesn't go as expected, I definitely say that. But, you know, with the opportunity to have open dialogue, I think that, you know, this would be, would actually be about a cut.
Thank you. Any other comments? Settlement on the headway here, Pat?
My name's Jeff Botts, and I live at seven three one five Riverside. Question, they keep mentioning transit wells, it's not going to be a marina, and that twenty-five percent of their parking will, should be dismissed due to the boaters that'll be coming in, they won't be using cars. Now, usually, there's restaurant docking, but they're not called transit wells. Is there going to be overnight docking there? If there's overnight docking there, everyone knows it's a boater, wife comes after work, the husband takes the boat, there's another car for that thing. So now, you're not mising twenty-five percent, you're adding twenty-five percent on the capacity of the parking there. And they're already over their parking. Now, it's overnight stay, hey, I'm going out Saturday morning, Sunday morning, the buddies, the girlfriends, everyone else, they're all bringing their cars out, because now it's a quick place to stop in, park, jump in the boat, head out that way, because it's closer to home than going that way back to the marina. So you're at, the boats are actually adding more parking problems, more traffic, and everything, if it's overnight staying and it's transit wells. And if you're doing that, now it's a marina, it's not just racking boats off to have dinner, it's an actual whole marina. And that's just something to put in your head to think about when you're discussing the transit wells, if it's just docked. the transit wells versus just docking the restaurant.
Thank you.
My name's Lawrence Proctor, seventy-eight eighty-nine Lake Drive. I am one canal over from this place. During the summer, Munch Bay, they party, they scream, they yell. We can hear their voices in our houses when they're partying. Those people are still going to come to Munch Bay, and that's a restaurant. Now, you're going to have four or five hundred boats. When the water goes low, those boats are going to get way out. And what they do is they come, they block all the canals. They don't care where they park. They bring their big boats come over there, so they're all over the place. We're going to have a problem. The parking lot, is that, they own that parking lot, or is that rented, leased? And if they lose their rental agreement, where do those cars park? And they drain it for that parking lot. So, the noise, I'm several football fields away and I can hear it without a beam. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diane Miller, seventy-three eleven B Lane, and I have a couple of comments. If they're going to provide valet parking back and forth down that road, you're going to add additional cars running up and down that road that MDOT needs to consider as well. Because how are the valets going to get back and forth to this valet parking lot down the road? I have a heck of a time getting out of Stier Road on weekends, like some other people have said. You just don't go out. You pack up, you get your stuff for the weekend, and you just don't go out on the road on the weekends. The other thing is, they didn't say anything about the distance, the total distance of this facility to us that live in the Stier itself. We're just as close, that live across M29, as some of these people that are on Stark and Lake. And the other thing is, I would like to be notified by the board when things like this are going on, this close to our neighborhood. And the only way I found out about this was through the Nextdoor app. Otherwise, I wouldn't have even known that this was going on. And I think that where I live is in close enough proximity to this that all of us on B Lane, Ed Lane, and Joe Char, we should have all been notified of this. I understand this goes back to October of last year when this started, and we knew nothing about it. So I would like to request that we get notification of future meetings in regards to this project. Noise levels are a concern. Two doors down from me, three doors down from me, there's a band that plays in their garage, and the noise, they're talking about facing the noise towards the lake, it doesn't matter, the noise is going to come back across. It's not going to just go out to the lake and not come across M29. And if they're going to be playing music until two o'clock in the morning, like regular bar restaurants places do, that's going to add a whole lot of noise to our neighborhood. And I am totally against this type of project. I'd like to see something like a Belle Isle Park, where people can come and bicycle around the area, have a nice nature area, give those of us that live at that end of Clay Township some kind of facilities, playgrounds for our kids, biking, rollerblading, a place where boaters can come up, fly kites, do normal kid stuff in that area. There's nothing for the kids in that area.
No, the woman, I'm sorry, the lady behind you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Igleda, and I have my property at eighty-eight twenty-five North Channel Highway. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. You know, everybody in this room loves this community, okay? My family came here to this area in eighteen seventy. My maiden name was Vermulon. My father was an entrepreneur. He made his living in this community for years, okay? This island was originally owned by the Lupinski's. It was, it was an area where they had their business. Excuse me, I'm nervous, I don't like public speaking. But the Lupinski family had a fishery here. They also had a dance hall here. My point is, when my family came here in eighteen seventy, nothing existed. None of you people lived here, most of your family didn't live here. And things changed. It constantly changes and evolves. And what I'd like to see happen is, this development, or any development, work with the people in the community. Because after all, we all live here. We all want to get along. We all want commerce. We all want this community to thrive. And I think that the frustration that I sense here is just that they don't want change. You know, the township had the opportunity, when this was listed, to buy this property for exactly the purpose that you set.
With what money?
With money from the state.
No.
Ma'am, hold on. She's addressed her comments to me.
So, at the end of, at the end of the day, they opted not to do it because they had other intentions of having a swimming area, a beachfront area. This would have been ideal for that, but that didn't happen. Okay, now you have somebody who wants to invest potentially millions of dollars into this community. They don't want to be set up for failure. That's why they're here and they want to work with people. So, you know, take it for what it is, but I think everybody has the same goal at night. Thank you.
My name is Greg Ashman, I live on Baby Shore Drive. My concern is actually three points. One is, if we add this to the community, I live off of Baby Shore Drive, which basically enters into Anchor Bay Drive, then goes into M29. On the weekends, when all that traffic is making its way, migration, it goes through the beauty of the lake, which is great, it is so difficult and dangerous for us to get onto M29, just at that light alone. To add that on there, you're going to have to put a traffic light there. And the concern I have is that my daughter, who's not the greatest driver, she's sixteen years old, and many of the other people in the community, they fear going out during the weekend. So that's definitely a concern of mine. Point two, what are we thinking about us who live adjacent to this property? Because I know myself, I've learned this the hard way. When an event shows up, I get people that park up and down my street and seem to use my yard as an entrance onto the lake. And I've got to sit there and play policeman all the time to say, hey dude, you know, could you park over here? Or could you, you know, at least give me a little courtesy about, you know, I understand you want to go out and have fun with your friends on the boat. But at the same token, I understand what these men are trying to do and I respect it, but they're not looking at what it's going to do to the community and the people that here, live here, that have paid that money for that little sanctity that we bought alongside the water, it will be destroyed, not just on our traffic issues, but also within our community, for the people that are going to show up and try to get involved in that party. Because maybe they can't get there by boat, but they can get there by kayak, or they can swim to a boat. I see it every day, every weekend. Point three is, you know, they're asking for a dredging permit, and I know this myself, it's easy to get it when you've got high water. They would be having a very difficult time if we were in low-level situations like we were in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand. They don't give them away easily. Right now, God bless their soul, they're picking a great time to walk in and talk to the DEQ and walk in and talk to the Arm Corps. However, if this was a different time, their, their ability to get this through would probably not happen, because there will be a lot of dredging for that to actually work. I know that. I live in the community, I know that area well. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Please stop. He has one.
Hi, my name is Scott Longgrave, I live at seven eight seven three Stark Drive. I'm kind of nervous, along with everybody else. You know, with this phase two, in phase one with the seawall running down the canal, there's not sufficient room for a forty-foot, fifty-foot boat to park on that side, and me park on my side and still have thoroughfare for all the boats. People that live back on Steer Drive in that neighborhood back there will never see that lake again. There's just no, there's no way to turn around a boat. There's a lady here, she lives down at the end, right by Wally's Place, Great Lakes Oxtedex. That's where all these big boats are going to have to be turning around. And with the water up so high, it's not going to help, but water's going to be splashing over seawalls. With all the boats docked up and down the seawalls, everyone that bought a house on Stark Drive is now going to lose their view. What we worked for to save for and live at will be taken away from us. And I don't think that's fair. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else who we haven't heard the comments already from? Gentlemen and ladies, I will go to you next, okay?
You know, can I use this forum to ask questions?
I'm sorry?
Can I use the forum to ask questions?
No, you can make comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Wait. Excuse me, let me, let me rephrase. You can ask the chair a question, if that's what you're trying to do. Let him go first, okay?
Hi, my name is Larry Shivers, I live at seven 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 zero Barnworth. And when I look out my back door, I can see the island. So, a few things here. Some that's kind of related to what they were saying, you know, this deep water is a cycle, it's going to get shallow again, and you're going to have to dredge again. You know, right now, if you dredge another six years, eight years, you're going to have to dredge again. Being so close to the marsh, St. John's Marsh, it's a protected area, and if you look at that island, it looks like St. John's Marsh, which I also think should be protected. I'd like to think about, maybe have some kind of report done by the DEQ to see what they think about the long-term effects it might have on the eagles and on the fish and on the birds and all that kind of stuff. I just, I just feel that if this happens, it's a big project, and this area just can't support it, and I feel it'll change our quality of life, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my last name is Hannah, seven nine three one Stark. And you know, I just have a question. I saw diagrams earlier on of low level and high water levels in the island. And what is the plan based on? Is it based on low water levels or high water levels? In other words, what landmass actually makes this up? Do you have any GPS coordinates showing where the buildings will be? You know, what I saw from the plans is that there would be dredging all around the canals. Well, do you know, are they increasing the width? Are they decreasing the width? Do you guys have any idea what they're actually proposing in terms of GPS coordinates where the buildings will be located? If they're going to put riprap? How far will it come out? Are they going to increase the size of the island? Are they going to keep it the same? Do you have any idea? Is that in the plan? Are you considering it?
It is. I'm sorry, it was the last part.
Yeah, is it in the plan? And the reason why I'm asking that is, as the prior gentleman said, and the people that are living along those canals, they're proposing a hundred and five boat slips. Now, some of it'll be, you know, on this side, some that side, et cetera. Well, it's a heck of a lot of boats, and there's not a lot of room. So what are they proposing to do, actually? In terms of GPS coordinates, where's the building going to be? How far out will the riprap come? Will they extend? What are they going to do? Do you know that?
Our planners can help me with this, but I know the applicants have been working with the Arm Corps and all the people that have done DEQ to get all their permits and everything. I don't know if we've actually seen any of that.
I don't know how anybody can approve any plan on the water without knowing that. And especially the DEQ. How could you, how could the DEQ approve that?
I can't speak for them. The other information at this point, it's a valid question. We don't actually have an answer at this particular point.
Okay, I would just recommend, you know, the board, don't approve anything until you know exactly what's going to be done. DEQ or not, you know, it doesn't matter, it's your, it's your decision as well, and it impacts all of us. And I can't, I can envision, you know, you'll have, as people, there's two to three hundred boats here in the summertime, and another hundred and five coming around these canals and around the island. I can't even see that. Now, I guess in terms of the noise, I would only say, you can have boats out here playing their radios fairly loud, you will hear it halfway across the lake. Your noise ordinance is eleven PM. That means live music until eleven PM at night.
But they go all night.
So you really, you really need to consider that for the residents as well. And I think a prime example of that would probably be the Tint Fish Restaurant down in Ira that had same issues. So, but I would strongly recommend you get GPS cords, you know exactly where everything's going to be, if they plan on extending the island, what they plan on doing, before you approve anything.
Thank you. Appreciate the call.
Hi, my name is Gerald Rosen, I live at seventy-nine thirteen Stark Drive. And I understand what they're talking about, and that they love the area, how beautiful it is. They don't even know the name of the waterway they bought on. That is not a canal. That is called Bovier Creek. It runs from Anchor Bay all the way to the North Channel, and from the North Channel, it meanders its way back down out to the mouth of Anchor Bay. So, everything that they're talking about, there is no way that they cannot tremendously impact that creek without, to do the project that they want to do. It cannot physically be done. And for us to sit here in this township and say that we have a right to change that creek without asking everybody that's affected by that creek, which is a main thoroughfare for over a hundred families that live east of M29, what are those hundreds of families supposed to do when their weekend comes, they can't even get out? Think about it, and please learn where you live.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kelly Zborsky, I live at two-one-one William on Harson's Island. So I am the first person outside of the immediate quadrant to come up and have a conversation from Clay Township. I'm not representing Harson's Island, but it's just a different viewpoint that we haven't talked about. I'm going to talk about three things that nobody's talked about here tonight, okay? And these are all positive things, because I support what is going on in my community. I have had a family place on Harson's Island since before I was born, and I bought my own house September of two thousand and twelve, so I've now been a resident out here for seven and a half years myself. I own two businesses in this community. One is Clean Marine. It is a boat cleaning company that takes care of many familiar faces here, as well as a million people that go from Algonac all the way to Detroit. So I'm well-versed on this lake, just like everybody else is. My heart is this lake, I make my money off this lake, this lake is my lifestyle, is everything to me, okay? So I want to preserve everything that every single person here has to as well. But I want to talk about something that's very important to me as a younger person in this community, okay? And that is longevity. When you look out and see what we have in Algonac, I see no tourism, no destination, nothing that makes you want to go have a date night somewhere. Do I want to go to Marine City and go check out their downtown? Sure. Do I want to go to St. Clair and check out their downtown? Sure. Would I want to drive to Port Huron so there's different restaurants and something to go do and see? Yes. What do I have in Algonac, other than a Jets, a gym, a Dollar General, a Family General, you know, like all the little stores and that's it? But there's nowhere to go, okay? I'm not just going to go to Catch Twenty-two. I want something to go to, to enjoy. I want something to be proud of, to talk about in Algonac, something that we can do all the time and to be proud of, okay? I live here and I want something to be proud of.
This is Algonac. This is not Algonac.
Ma'am.
Okay. Very well. Okay, let's talk about the comments.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You need to address your comments towards me, not the audience. The audience members, please be respectful. Let her make her comments.
Okay. Something else that I see on my ride to and from home every day in the wintertime, which is something we haven't discussed around here, is snowmobile traffic. I see so many snowmobiles going up and down. This is something that the snowmobiles can pull up to and go and do outside of... This lake is my lifestyle, is everything to me, okay? So I want to preserve everything that every single person here has to as well. But I want to talk about something that's very important to me as a younger person in this community, okay? And that is longevity. When you look out and see what we have in Algenack, I see no tourism, no destination, nothing that makes you want to go have a date night somewhere. Do I want to go to Marine City and go check out their downtown? Sure. Do I want to go to St. Clair and check out their downtown? Sure. Would I want to drive to Port Huron so there's different restaurants and something to go do and see? Yes. What do I have in Algenack, other than a Jets, a gym, a Dollar General, a Family General, you know, like all the little stores and that's it? But there's nowhere to go. Okay, I'm not just going to go to Catch 22. I want something to go to, to enjoy. I want something to be proud of, to talk about in Algenack, something that we can do all the time and to be proud of, okay? I live here, and I want something to be proud of.
This is Algenack. This is not Algenack.
Very well. Okay, let's talk about the comments. I'm sorry, you need to address your comments towards me, not the audience. The audience members, please be respectful. Let her make her comments.
Okay. Something else that I see on my ride to and from home every day in the wintertime, which is something we haven't discussed around here, is snowmobile traffic. I see so many snowmobiles going up and down. This is something that the snowmobiles can pull up to and go and do outside of, by the raft and outside of, by the DNR site that's over by Bobbi Macs, and go and enjoy something as well. So I see there being more jobs and tourism and destination outside of the three months of the year. I see it actually being another season of two or three months of the year. I see the duck hunters in the fall coming to enjoy a meal there. I see it being something that could withstand in this community more than the three months. And I see other means of transportation coming in, other than boats and cars. You see dirt bikes, golf carts, snowmobiles. I see a lot of other options here. And I just want everybody to keep an open mind. I mean, I know everybody doesn't like change here, but there has to be some change at some point, just a little bit. And that's it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience?
My name is John Stack. I live at 7230 Bayview Shores. I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, there's comments made about how there's no destinations here. Check me if I'm wrong, but there's a tiki bar that's opening in May over by the Yellow Wall Seawall. So that adds to the business. There's plenty of things to do here already. The concerns we have as residents is the impact it's going to have both on the environment and on the traffic. We're concerned about the roads being able to handle it. If you look in area, you, I struggle to see how these roads can handle that kind of additional traffic. The safety of it for the residents, and then, of course, the others. Thank you, that's all I can say.
Anyone else in the audience? Gentleman in the very back, all right? You could be next, okay?
My name is George Colson, 7352 Ed Lane Road. I just got a couple of quick things to think about. When you go out to your backyard and you go out on the water, and you want to read a book, or you're relaxing for the evening, having a soda or beer or whatever, and you're listening to those frogs, crickets, birds, with 600 people listening to a bunch of music, probably most of us don't want to listen to anyway, that's done. Calm evenings are done. And that's all I would like to say about that. You folks represent us. We're your constituents. I don't think many people really want this, but I think it's important, it's so huge that maybe there ought to be an actual community vote.
Gentlemen in the back?
PJ Harrison. I am no longer a resident, but I was a resident. I used to live right next to the gentleman on the corner by the bridge, right across from Rose Marine. It was my choice to leave because of the traffic. I used to work for Wally at Grady Stock. So I'm very familiar with the canal. I was the one that probably spent the most time cleaning the canal. I also purchased our boat with the help of Bill Rose. So I'm very familiar with what Bill's been doing over there. He's doing a great job. I'm a patron of the area. Now I live in Algenack. As a former resident, I'm very aware, moved away from that before I had children. I have three kids. I agree with the gentleman I left earlier about the safety issue of the bridge, the viewing, the traffic. It's a long time issue. As a resident and a community member, I would like to see the vision of the township work with the gentleman to not only give him an opportunity to present and solve some of the issues, maybe work with some of the problems that are going on as far as the traffic, whether he goes in or not, the traffic is an issue. The bridge is an issue. I was also involved in a car accident right on that bridge, probably eight or nine years ago because of the viewing. With that being said, as a entrepreneur and a former, or a future business owner, I was driven out of the area because of zoning issues and things that were going on in the area. I'm a resident of Algenack now, and I was forced to move and buy property all the way from Marine City. I think that the people have a very, very good concern, very many concerns, but I think with a combination of the community's efforts and the investors' efforts, we could utilize this and possibly solve some of those concerns as far as the traffic, the bridge.
The laws.
Whether he goes in or not, I think that's something that needs to be addressed with MDOT, with other businesses in the area. I don't know if there's record of anything happening with Bill. Bill's a great guy. He's done a great job over there. Everybody's aware of the traffic on the shoulders, business-related, pedestrians, fishermen, people on the bridge, all the way down the pool marsh. I see this as an opportunity, like the other lady said, to bring in some people, bring in some tourism. It's not an immediate, everybody dumps this money into it, and it's going to bring a million people every day. I don't like to be negative. I don't foresee it being a Monday through Sunday all-night party. There's other area restaurants, there's always been bars, there's always going to be issues with people walking, even if there's policing.
Okay, time's up. So if you want to wrap it up, please.
Sure. I would like to see the community invite, if they're against the idea, invite the opportunity and the options, along with the vision of the township, to work together and possibly solve some of those safety issues and maybe see a little bit of a growth.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Penny Walgreen. I live at 7873 Stark Drive. And one of my biggest issues is safety. I have kindly asked boaters to slow down going down Bovier Creek, and we have had loaders blowing at our house, stuck in our roof, just inches away from my windows. When you've got this kind of, this amount of people coming to a small area, you're going to have people coming on my property or other people's property. You're going to have people from the city with concealed weapons. What's going to happen when a fight breaks out in that bar? And three people pull a gun? And one comes through my house? I'm not ready for it. And I vote no on this project for my safety and everybody else's safety and the community. Thank you.
Seeing no hands. We appreciate everybody who's been here tonight. Public hearing part of this will be closed at 9:01, unless we have the planner who's giving me a little heads up here, so. Not quite yet.
Just a suggestion for consideration. You've had a lot of people here who've come to speak, and based on information that's been discussed, there will likely be additional information that's going to come before you because clearly you're not going to be able to act because you know you have to look at additional information before making a decision, right? You have a couple of choices with the public hearing. You can close it now, or you could choose to leave it open, which would basically allow people to speak again at another meeting when additional information is available. If you postpone to a date certain, you can leave the public hearing open and people can speak, and it doesn't have to be re-noticed. So something to keep in mind, if you don't postpone to a date certain and you want to have additional public hearing, you would have to re-notice again. But you do have the option of postponing to a date certain and leaving the public hearing open so that people can speak at a later date when more information is presented. Or you can close the public hearing. It's your decision. I wanted to give you the various options so that you're aware of that before you actually close the public hearing.
Postpone to 2050.
All right, we're not going to do that. I'm glad you're late.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Concerning some of the comments regarding lack of notification.
Yes. Okay.
There is no notification. That might not be a good thing. I would suggest closing it and then re-notifying.
But I believe the notification was done pursuant to what the requirements are by what you're required to do, and there's a whole list of, is it 300 feet of the project? And it was on the project of both where the restaurant, that site is, and the proposed or not proposed part.
Just the island.
Just the island, okay.
Because that's where the actual activity is.
Okay. So we did do that part correctly.
As far as I know, yes, that's.
As far as I know. We're shaking his head, yes, also, so.
So you've met your standards.
And we also put in the newspaper and the website for Clay Township. So people can check that and get the information as far as what's happening with this project. So. What the planning commission was looking to do.
We need a date.
I'm sorry. But we need to have a date certain.
Madam Chair? It's my understanding that we have another review that planners need to look at.
Right, there was another submittal that was made.
And those are due to you by Friday.
If they want to get on for the, for May. However, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. This may also impact your decision. As Matt mentioned, and as the applicant mentioned, there's other outstanding permits, DEQ and Army Corps. So I have not seen any permits issued. I've seen applications, but I have not seen that there's been a permit issued. I heard the applicant say a DEQ permit has been issued. So I think that needs to be provided so that you can review exactly what the permit is. That information should be actually provided, the actual permit that's been issued, if in fact the permit has been issued, so it can be reviewed. Same thing for Army Corps. Those permits should be provided so that you can understand what's being permitted. The other question that we raised is whether or not your ordinance allows you to require a traffic study, if that's a concern. So if in fact you think you need one, then this would be a good time to let the applicant know that you want to see one. If you don't think, if you just want to see whatever the permitting process does, that's your choice too. But I just want to bring that to your attention, that if you do want to require one, that typically that's, that takes a little bit to be done, and it would be fair to let the applicant know that you want one so that they're going to have to get a pre-qualified traffic consultant that MDOT's going to accept. And they'll have to address the township's requirements as well as, as well as MDOT's requirements for traffic studies. So that would be a good thing to talk about, whether or not you think that's something you want to see as part of that decision-making process. And then we have, obviously, the new submittal. So there's a lot of information that's still coming. Based on what I'm hearing, this is likely not going to be ready for that next meeting. It's going to be probably the following month. That's, that is, I mean, I think that's kind of the common sense test when you put all those pieces together. I really don't think everything's going to be in order so that you're going to be able to make that next meeting. I think it's probably more realistic to wait until June. So that's my suggestion, that if you're going to postpone to a date certain, it would be to your regular meeting in June.
So Madam Chair?
I would just ask that.
I would think, just given all of our questions and thoughts from the previous meetings that we've had on this project, and along with all the comments from tonight, that traffic study is definitely an issue. It needs to be addressed.
Did they also include a boat traffic? Because I see the Army Corps of Engineers is concerned about the increase in boat traffic.
Oh, it can, absolutely. In particular, since there's so many boats that are proposed to come, that could be part of the study where the forecasts are made for not only vehicular traffic and for the valet traffic plus boat traffic, all of that could be included in a traffic impact study.
I would think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to consider boat traffic if there's concern, hopefully to understand what the potential is.
Let that pay for it.
Okay, so we're looking towards those items, and to keep the public hearing open versus closing it, we have to do it to a date certain.
Correct. Postpone to a date certain and request additional information. So if you want additional information, you've got, what I've heard tonight is there's the DEQ permit, there's Army Corps permit, there's the MDOT information, the traffic impact study, and then also the Building Department and the Fire Department have issued some requests for information.
And the boat study.
And then those are the key items.
Would the boat study ever be in Army Corps or would there be in MDOT?
What I would suggest, and what we've done in typical situations like this, is a scope, like the applicant would retain an MDOT pre-qualified traffic consultant. They would propose a scope of services that would come to us, that would go to MDOT, and it could also go to the Army Corps for the boat component, so that they're aware, and in DEQ, so that they're aware of what that is. And then everybody can just sign off on that scope, saying, yes, we think this is the right areas to study. And then they can proceed with the study and then submit it to all those entities.
As far as keeping the public hearing open, I haven't had too much experience with traffic studies. I don't know if you have. Length and time-wise, not an average traffic study.
It typically takes anywhere on average, depending on the scope, certainly 30 to 60 days.
So that could make it difficult to postpone to a date certain.
Well, what you could do is you could postpone to your June meeting, and if everything's not ready at the June meeting, you could postpone it again to another date certain and keep it open.
Is there a number of times we can postpone it?
There's no.
It's unlimited?
It's unlimited.
And keep rolling over, which the only benefit, one of the benefits is, you don't have to keep re-notifying everyone who's there.
Right, and everybody who is interested knows that they need to be aware, that they need to check that date and be here for that meeting. And then if they're here, they'll know that it's postponed again, and they'll know what date it's postponed to. So they'll always be in the loop so they can follow that because they know the actual date that the planning commission is going to consider.
Katie, I have a question.
Sure.
They asked a question.
No. Sure, go ahead. We're trying to figure this out.
I just wonder, Rod, you talk about having the MDOT do the boat study, and you've said that you have a lot to do with MDOT and their studies. How many boat studies have you seen MDOT do?
No, this one, through the chair.
Hold on, wait a minute. Direct to the chair and the audience, also, please be patient with us. This is a big project, and we're trying to figure out the best way to keep the public informed and make a sound decision with this. So go ahead.
Through the chair. First of all, I've performed and reviewed tens of hundreds of traffic studies through my career in our firm, those traffic impact studies. We would not be doing the study. We would review it on your behalf. The applicant's traffic consultant that they retain would end up doing the study, and MDOT's not going to be interested in boat traffic necessarily. They typically are not. That's something that Army Corps most, probably they're the number one that are going to look at, at boat traffic. And DEQ may be interested, but typically Army Corps is most interested in boat traffic. The vehicular traffic, MDOT is going to be interested in. So they're going to want to likely review the scope of the traffic study, MDOT will. And like I said, the Army Corps can look at what's proposed for the boat traffic study. And then the applicant's consultant would actually conduct the study. Then they would submit that. Then they would submit that to the township, to MDOT, to the Army Corps, to DEQ, and all those entities would conduct a review and give you a report. And then you would have the input from all of those various agencies as to what they, how they feel about the traffic study.
In that case, I have a motion. I move to keep the public hearing open to receive clarifications to respond to open issues from DEQ, MDOT, Army, building and fire department concerns until June 26th.
But the traffic is.
You want traffic.
Traffic study.
Yes, that, that's a motion.
And boat.
Yeah, traffic, vehicular and boat traffic.
So why don't we clarify traffic if we're referring to vehicular and boat traffic?
That would add vehicular and boat traffic study included to the motion.
Anything else that we can pick up while we're doing this?
Keep the public hearing open to receive clarifications to respond to open issues from DEQ, MDOT, vehicular and boat traffic studies included, Army Corps, building and fire department concerns until June 22nd. Uh, 26th, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Okay, those are the studies, but we're looking also for the actual permits.
They've issued, yes.
But that's included in what the building department letter said, so all those integrated items is in that, is in the motion, okay? Members of the audience, could you just keep it down for just a minute, please? Just trying to get this motion. Okay, well, that is, special land use standards, items one through nine, I believe it is. I would suggest you make it, add to the motion that the applicant personally address each one of those nine items.
Okay, I'd like to add to the motion that the applicant had the special land use standards addressing the nine items. And just say all instead of all. Special.
There's nine of them.
Advocate address all special land use standards.
Okay, Wade is going to restate the motion, so everybody will sit here.
Can you relate it to?
Well, we might have to.
Keep the public hearing open to receive clarifications to respond to open issues from the DEQ, MDOT, the Army Corps, respond to all building and fire department concerns as well as vehicular and boat traffic studies, and the applicant address all special land use standards.
Good job.
Good job. This could be, I guess, Al on June 26th.
June 26th would be the next meeting, well, not next meeting, the timeframe we think we can do this. And if we can't, according to.
You'll all come back, June 26th. We'll be here, a lot more of us.
Okay, well, with that, hold on, hold on. That's the motion.
Ten seconds.
Who's the second? Carol Brooks, the second. Any more comments regards to the motion?
Keith Bell?
Yes.
Edward Keller, excuse. Wade Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Harold Bane?
Yes.
Mark Borchard?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Newsley?
Yes.
Anthony Schweitzer?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you.
Okay, we can add a link to this point. Close the public hearing. So that was postponed, is what I said.
You always postpone.
Thanks. All right, thank you, everybody. We need somebody who wants to meet now or have a seat.
Meetings will continue, but please leave the aisle.
When do they show their status?
This wasn't, isn't important.
Thank you. All right, remove out the item number eight, planning consultant. Okay, great. Oh, wait a minute, number seven was unfinished since we had a new study this year. Number nine, CBA representatives report. Right, number 10, more representatives report. Number 11, two persons report, the only thing I have to say is, the spring workshop is scheduled for Monday, April 29th. Want to sign up, please let the building department know, white talk. Okay? Other than that, item number 12, planning commission members' comments.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention, or remember that there is a memorial service at St. Michael's Catholic Church in Sterling Heights on Saturday at 9:30 a.m. in memory of Patty Watson, who was a member of the township for many years and worked closely with planning department, and did a lot for the planning commission in the other areas. And also on Sunday, the fraternal order of people's call, non-police route.
Any other planning members' comments? Item number 13, public comments. I'm requesting to make Mr. Zoran.
Yeah, I just wanted to quick point out, Michael Zoran, 5865 Marine City Highway. If it helps you guys, I run a large Facebook group with over 82,000 members devoted to St. Clair County. I can put the announcement in the announcement section for the next meeting if it helps you, so.
That's up to you, I'm not saying. But thank you for that information.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other public comments? See nobody, I'm moving on to item number 14, permit.
Don't move.
All favor. All opposed. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.